Good evening and welcome to the August 2, 2023, meeting of the Greensboro City Council. We are in the Katie Dorsett Council Chamber. People wishing to speak must sign up by 6:00 PM by using the Qminder kiosk just outside the council door. Please see the courier for assistance. Let the record reflect that Mayor Pro Tem Yvonne Johnson is absent this evening. Can we have a vote to recuse her? Moved by Hugh, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. All in favor say aye. Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
And let the record reflect that Mrs. Hoffman is in attendance via Zoom. Please silence any electronic devices. If you must make or receive a phone call, kindly do so from outside the chamber. We will begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Mrs. Thur, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome speakers to address council on specific agenda items. During the first meeting of the month, time is dedicated for speakers to address council on non-agenda items. Speakers are allotted three minutes for comments. At this time, all speaker handouts should be provided to the city clerk or the courier to distribute to council. Speakers should not approach the dais unless invited by council. The city of Greensboro is committed to promoting an environment that is free of discrimination, bias, and bullying. In order to maintain a safe space for all speakers, members of the audience or speakers from the podium who intentionally disrupt the meeting or ridicule other speakers will be given a warning, and if unheeded, they will be removed from the meeting. That person will be suspended from in-person participation for three months. In order to preserve their right of free speech, they can attend virtually by Zoom, by phone, or by email. It is the goal of the city council that this chamber is a welcoming space and that all residents feel empowered to bring issues of concerns before their elected officials. Zoom participants are requested to mute their microphones until they are called upon to speak. All meeting attendees are expected to respect the speakers and council deliberations. By statute, council members must vote on all items unless there is a direct financial interest or if they sit on a board of a nonprofit receiving funding from the city on a specific item. All votes will be moved and seconded. The mayor will announce the vote total. We do have a consent agenda for items G1 through G2. They are a grouping of agenda items that are voted on with one specific vote to expedite what are believed to be routine and non-controversial. Any council member may withdraw an item from the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest or for the purpose of voting no. Items removed from the consent agenda for discussion will be placed on the August 15 City Council Business Agenda. This meeting does include closed captioning. Depending on the length of tonight's meeting, we may take a short recess around 7:30. This is the time for ceremonial or presentation items. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing from you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number E2 is a resolution honoring the late Burley Hayes. Whereas on May 7, 2023, the community lost a local music industry legend and outstanding community member with the passing of the late Burley Hayes. Whereas living in Greensboro his whole life, Burley grew up in the family music business as early as 1979. And building on that foundation, he grew to become a beloved member of the Greensboro music scene for approximately 40 years. Whereas venturing out on his own, he established Somewhere Else, Inc. as the president and ran Somewhere Else Tavern, also known as SWEAT, which originally was located on Freeman Mill Road but later landed on Friendly Avenue. Whereas in spite of his battle with diabetes and being a double-leg amputee, Burley was famously known to open doors and give everybody a chance as he fostered and supported generations of all music, all original music-type musicians. Whereas various artists received early or their very first exposure at SWEAT and later found exciting recognition in numerous avenues such as covers of LA Weekly, leading classes at esteemed Nashville recording studios, playing at major music festivals, and even performing on The Tonight Show. Whereas Burley will be remembered as the legendary owner that exuded the motto that everybody loved "somewhere else." Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Greensboro, that the city council wishes to express its sense of loss and offer its condolences, sincere appreciation, and gratitude for the many years of musical influence to the community by Burley Hayes. The legacy he leaves will be remembered not only by the residents of Greensboro but by the national music scene as well. A copy of this resolution shall be delivered to the family of the late Burley Hayes as a symbol of the gratitude of the residents of the city of Greensboro for his contributions in the community and across the music industry. Council, please vote. I move the item.
Second.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
And that passes eight to zero. Crystal?
I'm going to keep this brief because I ugly cry. I'm very grateful to Mayor Yvonne, to everyone on the council, to the city of Greensboro, and to every musician that ever dawned my husband's doors. Myself and a few other people have decided that every May we will be holding a music festival in his honor, with all proceeds going to a different charity each year. I have proposed that the first one go for children who cannot afford musical instruments in school. So I just wanted to thank you all again. And before this gets worse, I'm going to step away. Thank you all.
Thank you. Daniel, did you wish to say a few words?
Hello and thank you everyone for enlightening us all.
Could you get closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you everybody for enlightening us all and giving us the opportunity to speak to great Burley Hayes. From a very young age, when I used to run away from home, Burley always gave us a place to come. And sometimes, he might not want to hear what he had to say, but you needed to hear what he had to say. He'd tell you to get it together. He always had a place to come. If he was unhappy, he would make you happy. I never seen him a whole day in my life complain. And he was so good to me and my family. And I appreciate everything this man has done for this community, for everyone that I know. He's an incredible person, you guys. Like, if you met him, he liked the room. You really do. And a lot of times, when I was down and out and didn't think that I had a chance or a way to get around, this man would stand up for you when you wouldn't stand up for yourself. So thank everybody for giving us this opportunity and for allowing us to come here and talk about Burley today. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will look forward to that celebration in May. We now move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Now is the time for speakers from the floor on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity to hear from anyone wishing to speak. Generally, this is a time of listening for council. The subject will be noted, and if it requires action or a request, the city manager will note as such and provide steps for any required response or after action. Please make sure you leave your contact details with the city clerk to facilitate communication. Our first three speakers are Pamela Henderson, Chelsea Renee, and Louis Medina. Is Pamela, if you would, and Chelsea Renee, is Chelsea here yet? That's fine. So we will have Pamela Henderson, Louis Medina, followed by Dell Stone.
I would like to pass out. I'm a motivational... My name is Pamela Henderson. Good evening, everyone. And I would like to pass out. I only have two left, so sorry I had to pass. You know, didn't have the two. But I'm here solely because, first, I don't care what at the background that you're from. I'm solely here for the purpose of making a difference in our community. I am here to work with you guys. Only positivity. I'm going to tell you just a little bit about myself. I lived in a small town in Reevesville, North Carolina. My mother and father roof in Vernon Hardin. They were my inspiration. They were farmers. They also went to finish school. They didn't, couldn't read. I mean, they could read, but they influenced me in my life. They quit school in 10th grade and the other one in the 8th grade, but they could read very, they was favorite and could read very fluently. And they had taught us to be in the civil rights movement. My second one is my brother, which is deceased. Those two are deceased. My brother would, had to go away for a while. And he would write me letters. He would write me letters, and I would write him back and to comprehend what I was saying. And Portia Paris, she was an inspiration in my life as well. Pierre Lopez was my first breakthrough. And Brian Hadding also helped save my life. I quit school in the 11th grade because I did a research paper on Angela Davis because I already knew that the history of our country from those people. I end up going to get my GED, and then I majored in criminal behavior.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up. If you have written comments, you could submit them to the courier or you could follow up with an email.
Can I pass out? Can I give you my petition?
You can give it to the courier.
To courier? Okay. Well, I have a petition that I also signed. This, the petition for, what I'm trying to do is to, along the way, I affiliated with the wrong people and got on cocaine to tell you about the cocaine, I got on cocaine in Huron. And then I was going to tell you how I can make a difference in, was going to try to make a difference in there by putting more cameras in the neighborhood. Because I am a victim, I was, I am a victim of the crime. I am a victim of crime. I was raped three times, four times.
And we do, we do have your contact information, I believe, and if...
Could Trey connect with her?
Excuse me?
Trey.
Yes.
Could he connect with her, please?
That's what I was asking for the contact information for. And if somebody could reach out and also explain the cameras that we have and how additional ones could be put in. Thank you.
And I would also like to speak to John, the chief of police, if it's all possible.
Trey would be able to arrange that.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Louis Medina. I'm with the Working Class and House Organizing Alliance. Today, I'm here to address what I think is the most pressing issue in our society today. What is the most pressing issue? Is it Hunter Biden? No. Is it Trump running for reelection? No. Is it what Elon Musk's rocket does if it makes it out the atmosphere without blowing up? No. The most pressing issue today is that we are dealing with record-high temperatures and globally, and there are more people unsheltered than there have ever been before. We live in an unsheltered society. And what has our city done? What has any government done at a city level, a county level, right, all the way to the national level? Absolutely nothing. In fact, less than nothing. I just got a report that the IRC just kicked all the houseless people off their property, which is a charity that this city council constantly funds. Whose fault is it? Is it the poor working class's fault? Is it our fault? Is it my fault? I don't remember spewing poisonous gases into the air for 100 years. And I don't remember evicting myself. See, this is absurd, right? It's capitalism. It's capitalists' fault. It's people like Zach Matheny. It's people like all these other people work for and constantly giving tax cuts and our tax money too. That's the truth. How do we change it? Well, you know, I don't think strongly, and I've been doing this, strongly worded speeches or voting, because we've been doing that for the past 100 years, is going to change it. I do think that could help and buy us some time, but I don't think that's going to change it. I believe that we need to organize ourselves as a class. We need to actually do that with the end goal of seizing everything that is ours, from this podium to this mic to the seats that that city council sits on. Thank you.
Dell Stone, followed by Billy Belcher, followed by Hester Petty.
Right. Dell Stone with WO. Two things I want to address today. First, because myself and other WO comrades are continuously engaging with our community, we have an on-the-ground perspective of some of the conditions our community members are forced to experience. In recent months, we have observed a massive increase in the number of people we serve at our distributions. New faces appear every week, many of them children. This past week, we saw the highest number of people and the most new people we have ever seen on the streets. Folks are out there dealing with dire physical and mental health problems because healthcare has been profitatized into a wall of garden for the rich. Poor folks are outside in over 90-degree heat because housing costs have skyrocketed along with everything else. Conditions are clearly deteriorating. More and more people are being evicted, finding themselves with no options. For a lunch, they rely on us, a small, independently-funded community organization. For every elected official, this should be embarrassing. City councillors recently made light of finding $20,000 in the budget for scholarships. Like that amount was nothing. Yet they say they cannot meaningfully invest in ensuring their constituents have shelter. They throw funds to the police and corporations like Candy at a parade while relying on Communist Collective to fill in the gaps. It's incredibly telling that they can sit in front of their constituents week after week and ignore the crisis surrounding them. They refuse to solve these problems and will continue to because under this system, what they care about is capital. Second, I want to bring up an issue that is relevant statewide as much as it is locally in Greensboro. Recent judicial rulings have offended the process for North Carolinians to request police camera footage. Police footage is automatically public record in other states, but in this state, requesting it now requires filing a civil action in addition to the proper paperwork. The issue is, no one seems to know how this process works. Not journalists, not routine records requesters, not even lawyers, because this new requirement is unprecedented. So in practice, there is currently no way to obtain police recordings of police killings in North Carolina. So I have two questions that I would genuinely like this council to answer or at least investigate and the city attorney and city manager to look at. First, to your knowledge, has anyone requested the police video footage from the night Greensboro police killed Ernesto Ruiz on June 30? And second, if you don't know the answer to that or if no one has requested it, will you commit to requesting the police footage as you have in the past? I genuinely want to know.
We always wait until it goes through the FBI investigation. Right. And once, once the investigation is played out, then we can have access to...
But will you commit to request it?
Mayor, I thought we had asked the city attorney to do whenever those things come.
Yeah, the police chief has come up with one of the first policies, I think, in the state when it comes to requesting videos.
Because in the other case of the other recent police killing, they said in the news that they had requested it immediately after. It said GPD requested the footage, but in this case, there was no such statement made.
I didn't understand a word you just said.
They request, there was, in the other police killing before that, the news reported that the police had requested the footage at the time, but this was not stated in this case. So there was a discrepancy there. Yeah, I just, I would like you to commit to requesting the footage. Thank you.
Trey, do you want to talk about what the policy is or maybe it's best if we just send it to Ms. Stone?
Yeah, we can, we can send it. I can't really speak to like media coverage. However, there is a current policy of practice that any critical incident that we have in a police shooting is included in a critical incident, then the chief will automatically request that the video be released. So they will make that petition. Now, again, I mean, I want to remind people, the chief is subject to the laws that govern the state as well. So all I can do is petition for that release to a judge to authorize it. But he has committed to doing that without the council having to prompt, without people having to ask that any critical incident, they will automatically request that.
Thank you. Billy Belcher, followed by Hester Petty, followed by Laura Jackson.
I am Billy Belcher from WO, the Working Class and Houseless Organizing Alliance. I'm here tonight because Greensboro is experiencing a public safety crisis and our city council refuses to address it. Y'all consistently talk about the police as an instrument of public safety, but that is demonstrably false. It has been scientifically proven by study after study after study that the police do not stop crime. The police do not lower crime rates, and every honest and sensible person should know this. In fact, police are one of the biggest public safety problems this city has. After Greensboro police choked Marcus Smith to death, we found out that what happened to Marcus was not unique. Turned out, the police were systematically misusing the rip-hobble restraint to hogtie and torture black residents. There were literally dozens of instances referenced on video, but our city council has done nothing to punish or remove the responsible officers. The police murder of Joseph Lopez revealed GPD misuse of police dogs against nonviolent people, and we can feel certain that this is a systemic misuse of lethal force as well. Thus far, our city council has done nothing to change this policy and protect citizens from such attacks. So far this year, four different Greensboro police officers have been arrested for sexual assault. As far as I know, none of you have even spoken on this pattern of sexual violence against children and the disabled. Instead, you continually give more money and more power to your gang of rapists and racists and murderers. Meanwhile, there have been two more police homicides in Greensboro so far this summer. And as far as I know, that is according to the information made available by the police, when Graham Robinson was killed, Graham Robertson was killed by the police this summer, he had not committed any kind of criminal activity when he was shot and killed. And I say as far as I know because, as my comrade noted, getting information about this kind of violence, this taxpayer-funded violence, is almost impossible. We pay for body cams. They're specifically provided, it was claimed, to provide more accountability, but we get no access and no accountability. We pay for the gun, but we have no control and no accountability over how the gun gets used. And it is typically used against us, the people. You can continue to sit there and play see no evil, hear no evil, but you all have a lot of blood on your hands. And I would like to end by asking the mayor what our city is doing to stop its police officers from continuing to sexually assault people.
Thank you. Your time is up. Hester Petty, followed by Laura Jackson, followed by Anne Passabon?
Is anything happening to stop these sexual assaults happening in the city, though? No?
Your time is up.
That's an answer.
My name is Hester Petty. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but today there was a memorandum, opinion, and order in the lawsuit brought by the estate of Joseph Lopez against Greensboro police officer Matthew Hamilton and the city of Greensboro. And Officer Hamilton had asked, basically presented a motion to dismiss the lawsuit at this early stage. And his second motion was, if that motion fails, could you please delay the civil case until Matthew Hamilton's criminal case is resolved? Both of those were denied by the federal judge. I highly recommend you read this 21 page because I think it's going to give you a good idea of where your case stands. There's one other thing I want to bring up. In the order, apparently, the city of Greensboro filed a response to Officer Hamilton's motion for the dismissal, saying they did not oppose Officer Hamilton's motion. They also requested, the city requested that the Montel claim be dismissed. And the judge said very succinctly that she would not consider this request because the local rules do not permit... the local rules do not permit parties to make motions within their response briefs. Motions must be set out in separate pleadings, and I'm kind of wondering what kind of lawyers you all have hired that they don't know this. I'm not asking questions, I know your lips are sealed when it comes to litigation, but it's already kind of worrisome that you're going to spend millions of dollars on taxpayer money, on lawyers that don't know what they're doing.
Laura Jackson?
My name is Laura Jackson, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about a better way to help the homeless. Greensboro's homeless fall into two categories. The first is those who are unwilling to put forth the effort to help themselves, and those who work hard to rebuild their lives and appreciate help. I speak from experience about this topic. In the last eight months, I have twice attempted to help homeless individuals by allowing them to stay in the addition to my home. The man who stayed during the very cold, single-digit days at the end of 2022 was an example of the homeless who are unwilling to help themselves and really don't want help. The couple currently stuck in my home are the type who deserve the best efforts of the city to get their tragically disruptive lives back together as soon and easily as possible. Because of my experience helping the Adams family and 25 years as a Realtor, I believe I know what is missing in the help Greensboro is trying to provide for the homeless. So my first recommendation would be, help the most deserving homeless people in Greensboro who do not qualify for the Housing Authority's Rental Help Program by having the Housing Authority share with the landlords and property managers at no cost the information collected from homeless applicants that are turned down. Second, give those applicants, you have to disappoint, a list of those landlords and property managers who will accept their certified information, showing that information will save both parties time and money. And it'll also, on afterthought, it will clear the need of those people for shelter and open up space and shelters for others that you can help with the housing program. I had invited Lucius and Ursula to join me tonight, so if you had questions, you could direct them to them about their circumstances, but I've done the best in writing to provide their story as I know it. And I've given to Ms. Kennedy contact information for the two of them and myself.
Thank you. Ann Casabam, followed by Bill McNeil, followed by Evelyn Smith.
Ann Casabam, 3469 Amick Road, Elon. And Mayor Vaughn, council members, I'm here with others tonight to ask you to pass a resolution supporting the UN Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. And I know you may have some questions about that. Though I live on the border of Alamance and Guilford, my church home is here at Friendship Meeting. And though none of you were elected because of your foreign policy, nuclear weapons are both a local and world issue, and we all have a crucial role to play in ridding the world of this, our greatest threat. Our role in the international campaign against nuclear weapons is to ask our local councils to pass a resolution for this treaty for mutual and complete disarmament, which has 92 signatories and 68 state parties. Yours is to pass this simple statement, which I believe you now have in front of you. Our city is deeply concerned about the grave threat that nuclear weapons pose to the communities throughout the world. We firmly believe that our residents have the right to live in a world free from this threat. Any use of nuclear weapons, whether deliberate or accidental, would have catastrophic, far-reaching, long-lasting consequences for the people and the environment. Therefore, we support the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons and call on our governments to sign and ratify it. Green Level, Carrboro, Durham, Chapel Hill, Chatham County have all passed this resolution. Other cities in the Piedmont are considering it and will be encouraged by your leadership. UN Secretary-General Gutierrez warns humanity is just one misunderstanding, one miscalculation away from nuclear annihilation. We have been extraordinarily lucky so far, but luck is not a strategy. We know this. In 1961, two bombs dropped near Greensboro in Farrow, North Carolina. Neither detonated, but one has never been recovered. Locally, we bear the costs of nuclear weapons. National Priorities estimates that over 22 million will leave Greensboro in 2023, federal taxes alone, just for nuclear weapons and associated costs. Those dollars will never feed, or house, or provide medical or childcare for the people of Greensboro or anywhere. So we're happy to discuss this with you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and council members. I'm Bill McNeil. I reside at 1014 Gretchen Lane in the New Garden Guilford College community. You may recall my advocacy for clean renewable energy in the city and in your budget, and for preserving the heritage and rich character of our New Garden area and indeed the city. But tonight, I join with my friends here, asking you to support the UN Treaty to prohibit the use of nuclear weapons. Let me ask you, if you will, to pause briefly, and imagine yourself in Hiroshima, 78 years ago, this Sunday, August 6, 1945. You're awake at 8:15 in the morning, hearing air raid sirens. In a few minutes, everything around you in your city is obliterated. Nearly all buildings are vaporized with the first atomic bomb, one of two our country dropped that week. And so far, these are the only nuclear weapons any country in the world has used. If you survive miraculously, you're horribly scarred, and you'll suffer cancers from exposure to radiation for years. You all recognize that climate change threatens everyone on the planet, especially the most vulnerable. We're reminded by the film Oppenheimer that's out now how dangerous, how fragile, how perilous the nuclear weaponry that we have developed are. We're also reminded that the citizens of our country in southern New Mexico have also suffered from the testing that led to that bombing. Not to be alarmist, but nuclear weapons pose threats at least as great as climate change. I would ask you to also imagine turning nuclear weapons into nuclear energy. This can be done, but it needs scaling back from our attachment to nuclear weapons as a defense. I would urge you to think of how the money that is going to support the nuclear industry and the preservation of our nuclear weapons could be used in Greensboro, in other cities around the country, for our local needs. We as humans, our institutions, our utilities, our fossil fuel industry created the climate crisis, and so too, humans created nuclear weapons. We created this monster and continue to feed it. I urge you to support the resolution.
Thank you. Evelyn Smith, followed by Tim Lindeman, followed by Janet Nagel.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Evelyn Smith. I live at 1316 Spry Street in Greensboro. Forty years ago, Steve Summerford and I lived in Japan, and we spent time in both Hiroshima and Nagasaki. We had the privilege of interviewing a number of the survivors of the atomic bombs. They're called hibaksha in Japanese. And these hibaksha told us not only of the terrible devastation from the blast of the mushroom cloud, but also the long-lasting deadly effects of the radiation, including fears of genetic damage for future generations. Hearing from these survivors, who have dedicated their lives to telling the world about the horrors of nuclear war, it made a lasting impression on me. And Hiroshima and Nagasaki, which are medium-sized, typical cities in Japan, much like Greensboro, were destroyed by bombs that were only a tiny fraction of the size of the weapons that we have in our nuclear arsenal today. So I feel compelled to add my voice to those citizens and countries calling for a total international ban on nuclear weapons. I understand that this may feel like an issue that is way beyond the scope of city council, but public safety is an essential part of the responsibility of local government, and it is ordinary people who will suffer if a nuclear exchange ever happens, because radiation knows no distinction between soldiers and civilians. And the $1.7 trillion allocated for monera, modernizing the US's nuclear fleet, stockpile of over 5,200 weapons, is money that's being taken directly from cities like ours, where it is needed for essential local work instead. It's very easy to feel that nuclear weapons are a terrible thing that simply can't be stopped. But the history of the human race is that we have ended wars, we have ended Jim Crow segregation, and many other forms of oppression by the power of grassroots action. Supporting this resolution is a way of declaring that we all can and must take whatever steps we can to create a society that will not tolerate the use of nuclear weapons. So I urge you to face this threat to our city directly and support the UN Treaty. As James Baldwin has said, not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed unless it is faced. Thank you.
Tim Lindeman? Followed by Janet Nagel, followed by Steve Summerford.
My name is Tim Lindeman, and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you, Mayor, and with the rest of the council members about an important issue. The last time I spoke with you was on Zoom, and it's really nice to be here in person. I am a Quaker and a member of New Garden Friends Meeting and a retired professor from Guilford College. I am also the clerk, that's the name, same as chair in Quaker speak, of the Friends Committee on North Carolina Legislation, a statewide lobby organization modeled after the Washington-based Friends Committee on National Legislation. We work with our legislators to encourage passage of laws that support Quaker values. As you're probably aware, Quakers have played an important role in Guilford County, from the support of the abolition of slavery and the helping of founding the Underground Railroad to the opening of Guilford College. Quakers also worked in the background during the Civil Rights Sit-Ins at wars here in town. While the Society of Friends, or Quakers, is a non-creedal religious organization, we do support several things that include a peace testimony, which in part iterates the desire to live and act accordingly so that we can move forward towards the goal to take away the occasion of all wars. It is in that vein that I am here to ask you to pass a resolution supporting the UN Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. The resolution has already been read to you, so I won't repeat it. And others have already said a number of cities in Greensboro have passed this, and other cities now in the Piedmont are considering it. I'd like to reiterate that nuclear disarmament is a possibility. The world has reduced the number of nuclear weapons by 80% since 1980s. The UN Treaty was adopted in 2017 and entered into force in 2021. 122 nations voted in favor, with 69 nations, including all nuclear powers, did not vote. New Garden Friends Meeting has endorsed me to bring this resolution to you. We talked about it in our monthly meeting, and it passed the group's decision that we should step forward here. And now I urge you to make the voice of Greensboro heard by passing this resolution, and I urge you to do so tonight. Thank you so much.
Public speaking is always a challenge for me, but I wanted to share my experience with the Cuban Missile Crisis, and I'm old enough to remember that, when Soviet Union placed maybe six or eight, I can't quite remember, missiles, nuclear missiles aimed at the United States. And the news media reported hour by hour what was going on, and it was very nerve-wracking for all of us. Today, Russia and the United States have hundreds of nuclear missiles aimed at each other. And even though experts agree that the conflict in Ukraine has raised the threat of nuclear war even higher than it was in 1962, our news media are not reporting on it. Unless we go out of our way to find the information, we're completely in the dark about this. It's so important to make our decision-makers in Washington understand that we do not want nuclear war, that no political issue is worth risking destruction of the planet and extinction of humanity. Greensboro's support of the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons is that small step that you can take toward the giant leap for all mankind of ending the threat of nuclear annihilation. So I'm asking you to please pass this resolution to support the treaty. Thank you.
Followed by David O'Leary, followed by Jason Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor Vaughn and other council members. My name is Steve Summerford. I live at 1316 Spry Street in District 2. I'm here tonight to urge you to join other city governments throughout the United States and pass a resolution supporting the United Nations Treaty for the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. I know that it's highly unusual to have a group of people come to a city council to talk about nuclear arms. But we heard that cities, other cities in North Carolina, were doing exactly that, having these conversations about nuclear weapons, and some of those cities in North Carolina have now passed this resolution that we're asking you to pass. And you've heard those cities mentioned, but I'll mention them one more time, Durham, Chapel Hill, Carrboro, Chatham County, and a town called Green Level, a small town. So that's why we're here tonight, to give you the opportunity to join those other cities in passing this resolution. As you may remember from the packet of information that I hope you all received a couple of weeks ago, this resolution was law- weeks ago, this resolution was launched by an organization called the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons. They won, as you might have heard earlier, the Nobel Peace Prize in 2017, and that has thus inspired cities all over the world to say, "We need to take action on this issue." The councils that have passed the resolution did so because they realized that we live in a globally connected world, a global economy, and thus we have to tackle the global issues that affect the local communities. We are living in this global age, and thus, nuclear weapons is our issue, not just the United Nations' issue. One of our supporters who couldn't be here tonight, Reverend Julie Peoples, asked me to read this statement to you. She's the minister for Congregational United Church of Christ. She said, "I'm sorry I can't be here with you in person tonight, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank each council member for your deep commitment to our city. I hope that you will see passing this resolution as part of that commitment." Finally, I want to say that history shows that any time we've made progress, the area of nuclear disarmament has been a result of local governments, local grassroots organizers, individual citizens taking action. That's what we're asking you to do, is to take action tonight. And we have seen success. For example, the agreement between President Reagan and Gorbachev greatly reduced nuclear weapons. That came after a very robust nuclear freeze campaign. So the last thing I would like to say is this. I would like to read you a quote from one of my heroes, historian Howard Zandt, who said this, "Small acts, when multiplied by millions, transform the world."
Thank you.
So please act.
Eric Robaire, followed by Jason Hicks, followed by Chelsea Renee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. Just so there's no mistake, this is definitely a plea for action. We've known each other a long time, and as you know, I'm kind of a one-trick pony. I either come here to talk to you about public record, injustice, or DGI. Tonight, I'm here to actually talk about all three. As you know, I think most of you are reasonable individuals, and I think that we can all agree that when you take taxpayers' money, it's only fair that taxpayers know how you spend that money. As you may know, I own a couple businesses in a central business district, a couple buildings, one of them in a special district, which is known as the bid currently managed by DGI. For years, I've been trying to get records, meeting minutes, how they spend my money. And to date, it's been over a year, I haven't been able to get not only anything, but also every single DGI employee has been told not to talk to me. But if I had a request, I needed to go to Mr. Matheny. So you can only imagine how this is going. I need your help. The solution is simple. Don't take my money. I won't be asking questions. But the moment that you are taking my money, I think that, like everybody else, every other taxpayer, I have the right to know how you spend that money. It's kind of a contract that we have, you know, that every city has in a country across the world. So, Madam Mayor, I know that you like to emulate other cities and best practices, so here's one for you. Guilford County. Guilford County hires nonprofit to manage fire department. In the contract, there is a clause that says that the meetings are open meetings and must adhere to open meeting laws. They also say that the records are public for that particular project. So I would like you to do something similar to that. It's really not that complicated, and you can hold the solution in your hands. I'm asking you to help me and represent me to actually make sure that I have access to those records and that I can have the meeting minutes, so I know what they're talking about, what they're talking about doing, who they're talking about with my money. So I need your help, and I'm asking you, please, either make an amendment to the contract or just follow the law. Statute 132-1A actually states that special districts are subject to public record. The twist here is that that particular district is managed by a nonprofit, which itself is not subjected to public records. I've had this conversation with Mr. City Attorney many, many times, and I think that here lies, you know, the whole issue. That the special district is managed by a nonprofit that refuses to adhere to the law. So I need your help.
Thank you. Jason Hicks, followed by Chelsea Renee, followed by Rebecca Bielello.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jason Hicks. This is a screen grab from the 2016 bond tracking specific to the South Elm redevelopment, which includes the corner where Lidl is, or where Lidl should be. But I'll begin by saying that I find it disgusting that since 2016, the city has been in possession of over $4 million in bond money specific to the redevelopment of South Elm Street. Specifically included in this map that you see on the screen is a site where Lidl potentially was going to be. That $4 million that could be used for soil remediation at the proposed site, so far, only $300,000 of that money was used to dump gravel on the corner lot for Mr. Matheny's boss. More recently, there was a big fuss about Lidl extending their due diligence, while the city put no due diligence themselves in the land that they claim they want to sell. I would encourage you all to spend the bond money to remediate that corner and move forward with Lidl. These decisions will directly impact 11 neighborhoods. Do the right thing, or we will bring those 11 neighborhoods down here to speak with each and one of you. And to quote James Baldwin, "We've yet to understand that if I'm starving, you are in danger."
Is Chelsea Renee here? Okay, then our last speaker is Rebecca Bielello.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Bielello, and I'm on the executive board of the Greensboro-Gilford Crime Stoppers Program. Recently, Chief Thompson spoke about the homicide numbers for 2023 being on track to set a yearly record. He was right when he said the community should be outraged. I understand that you can sometimes become desensitized to the news, but please remember, many of these victims are young. They are someone's child, parent, brother, sister. For the crimes that do not get solved, it is an extra layer of pain for the family. Last night was national night out, and neighborhoods came together to forge relationships. It was an opportunity to meet your neighbors and meet with local law enforcements to discuss public safety. Remember to look out for each other, not only once, but once a year, but throughout the year. Another avenue to consider is Crime Stoppers. Greensboro-Gilford Crime Stoppers is a program in which members of the community, media, and law enforcement work together to solve and prevent crimes. We encourage citizens to provide information anonymously, and if the tip leads to arrest or discovery of drugs, stolen property, or illegal firearms, the citizen is rewarded with a cash payment of up to $5,000. I would like to remind the community to call our tip line at 336-373-1000, or use our app P3. Do not mention your name. You will be given a code to ensure confidentiality. The last time I was here, there was a discussion that the Greensboro Police Department was short-staffed. This program can help bridge the gap that helps to keep our neighborhoods safe. I have been with this program for the past 10 years, and I am proud of the work that it does. I am also honored to have met many wonderful people at GPD who have been so accepting of this program and run our tips. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. And that is the last speaker that I have signed up for. Speakers from the floor, if I've missed anybody, if you've signed up and I've missed you. Okay, then we will close this portion of our agenda and move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Dr. Wells. Council, please vote. Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
And that passes eight to zero. We now move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Item H1 is a public hearing for a resolution for the East Gate City Boulevard Plan, public hearing and consideration of adoption. This item was postponed from the July 18, 2023, meeting of the Greensboro City Council for Proper Advertising. Mr. Clegg? And we do have three speakers signed up to speak on this.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor Vaughn and City Council members. My name is Russ Clegg. I work in the Planning Department, and tonight, we're holding a public hearing and considering the approval of the East Gate City Boulevard Corridor Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously in favor of adopting the plan after holding a public hearing at their meeting on May 17. When our comprehensive plan, GSO 2040, was adopted, one of the major pieces discussed about implementing the plan was to have a series of small-area plans for neighborhoods, corridors, and other areas that would help bring the broad goals of the Comprehensive Plan to life with more specific study and recommendations. This study grew out of that. It's been a very collaborative process across city departments with transportation, neighborhood development, parks and recreation, and libraries in particular. The plan addresses several issues that make East Gate City Boulevard important to adjacent neighborhoods and to the city as a whole. For one, the plan will help coordinate investments in the community. The Windsor-Chavas-Noco community complex is going to be a major change and is an exciting opportunity. And over the years, there have also been numerous other investments, such as Barbara Park, the Y, Gateway Gardens, Union Square Campus, Gateway Research Park, and the Downtown Greenway. It's also an important thoroughfare for residents, and with West Gate City Boulevard, it's one of the main entrances to Greensboro and connects to many of our most prominent institutions. This plan will provide information and will be a resource for decision-makers if zoning changes are requested, can inform capital improvement planning and funding decisions, and can serve as a tool for the community to advocate for changes they want to see. Community engagement was extensive and started online during the height of COVID. Subsequent meetings offered some of the first opportunities to engage with each other in public again. Areas of concern were fairly consistent throughout the process. A few of those were aesthetics. There's a desire to make sure the corridor's appearance is more consistent and is consistently of high quality. Connectivity, as a major thoroughfare, there is a need for improved options for moving along the corridor, as well as across the corridor, north to south, and between the surrounding neighborhoods. Investment, there is a need for investment and a wider range of services, but there is concern that these investments be of benefit to current residents. And identity, there's a desire for the corridor and the area to have a unique identity. Like Fleming Road and subsequent plans, this plan's objectives relate back to the six big ideas and the goals and strategies of our comprehensive plan. This will continue to provide a consistent framework for city policies. For this plan, the recommendations focus on housing, getting around, both along the corridor and across it, opportunities for growth and how that can strengthen surrounding neighborhoods, building upon the existing connections in the community, and the use of wayfinding, public art, and other means to create a unique identity. These recommendations come from close work among many city departments, including work at public meetings and with our initial research. So I won't go into each of those areas in detail, but to sum it up, here are some of the major points of focus. Improving access to non-car options along the corridor, increasing connections across the corridor, focusing non-residential uses into the activity centers, and diversifying the housing stock along the corridor, and strengthening neighborhoods and creating a platform for consistent dialogue. The one change that is recommended for our comprehensive plan is the addition of an activity center around the Windsor-Chavas-Noco complex. At this point, I'd like to answer any questions y'all may have before hearing from our speakers.
Sharon?
Thanks, Russ. I appreciate the presentation, and I'm certainly in support of the plan. But I had a quick question. In reading the agenda item, I need some clarification. The resolution speaks of, I think, the East Gate City Boulevard study area generally between McConnell Road and Florida Street. But when I go back, if I can go back, then it talks about another area that is not consistent, if I can pull this item back, right here. It talked about, I should have wrote it down, where is it here? Because what it does, it extends it beyond the parameters. So I wanted to be clear on which areas were we talking about specifically.
Okay.
The plan covers East Gate City Boulevard from South Elm to the west to the I-40 interchange on the east. So, where is it? McConnell, Florida, they don't intersect. They run differently.
Well, so the main focus of the plan is on the Boulevard itself and the road and the, you know, properties facing that road. But we did talk about the neighborhoods adjacent to it, kind of looking between McConnell Road, Washington Street, and then down to Florida Street, and kind of jogs around to the south, taking the Barbara Park property. So we tried to get a broad area that would be most influenced by that road, you know, the connections between those neighborhoods, the connections to the facilities along that road. So that, you know, extends to those neighborhoods around that. Is that helpful in answering the question?
No. Yeah, I'm just trying to get some clarity, because when I look at the item, and it references districts one and two, but then Mr. Matheny said, "Oh, no, it's three as well." So I just need to be clear of what this East Gate City plan is covering. Because I know we've met multiple times, had lots of public hearings, and met at Windsor-Chavas and then, you know, and been engaged in that manner. But this is an area, to me, that really needs some uplift and has been neglected for quite a while. And so, earlier, you said it was West Gate City that's the entrance into the city, but it's actually East Gate City that's in the east side, that's the entrance into the city as well, corridor. So I just want to be kind of clear on how that's defined as we start to work toward building what's in this plan. Because this is the same type of plan that I want to see done for southeast Greensboro as well.
Looking forward to that. I think in reference to West Gate City, when you take those two together, it brings you all the way into the Coliseum by A&amp;T, U.N.C.G. It really connects the whole city. This plan itself is focused on East Gate City, though.
East Gate City, okay. All right. That's, I just need to be sure I was reading it right. Okay. Thank you.
And East Gate City starts at South Elm.
Right.
Which would be District 3.
Actually, it starts at, it starts at Eugene Street.
So it starts where? Can you say that again?
It's great when people are fighting over.
Can you say, can you say that again? Sue, I didn't hear you.
Eugene Street.
Okay. And Eugene Street is... Okay. Any other council comments?
Natalie. We do have a few speakers. Natalie Miller, Dominic Mercurio, and Kimberly Cameron Vizum.
Hi, everyone. Thank you guys so much for taking time and giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit about the East Gate City Corridor. I think before I speak, I'm appreciative of the clarification. So my understanding being the East Gate City Corridor, which is from the South Elm Eugene So my understanding being the East Gate City Corridor, which is from the South Elm Eugene Street all the way down to the airport, I mean, sorry, the interstate, the interstate, the interstate. So I'm Natalie Miller, I'm the owner of the Historic Magnolia House, which is a small business over on the southeast side of the city, which also will be impacted by the work that will be done in this corridor, based on my understanding of the jurisdiction. We are in support of the East Gate City Corridor for several different reasons, and just wanted the opportunity to talk a little bit about what those are from our standpoint. And so I think when we think about the traffic flow, our downtown is pretty centered. It's not very easy to get to the highway from downtown. And getting, I guess it's that 85 headed to Raleigh, I have no direction at all, but I believe that's the highway that's coming from Raleigh Inn. Oftentimes, they do take that Gate City exit, which takes you straight into downtown. So having the East Gate City Corridor and all of the work that will be done based on what has been described here, I think will be very welcoming to any of the city's visitors as a great first impression. I think something else to consider as well that we've taken into consideration is the proposed work that's happening with the Windsor-Chavas, that's happening with some of the other public art, some of the sidewalk and the access that's going to be taking place and cleaning up that area. I think it does give a lot of visibility and highlights our, one of what I'll call our hidden gems in terms of historically black history. When you think about the Bimble Park project that we're working on, when you think about the history there with Magnolia House, you think about the Freedom Cornerstone, I think it just really does shine a light on that aspect of Greensboro. Of course, you guys, for those that are familiar with me, know that historic preservation is something that's near and dear to my heart, and something that I've learned, and I think I only have three minutes, is that right? So I'll speed that up a little bit, 10 seconds, okay. But we're very excited about highlighting that aspect of Greensboro, which isn't an aspect that we really talk about and we really share in terms of our black history contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, and come back again.
Hi, and thank you. My name is Dominic Macurio, I live in District 2. Hi, Dr. Wells. I live on East Sprague Street with my wife and my son, who are here today, in the old Ashborough neighborhood. We're just a block in from East Gate City Boulevard, and I'm here today to speak in support of the resolution adopting the East Gate City Boulevard Corridor Plan. I believe that this plan represents an opportunity for the city of Greensboro to reaffirm its commitment to the economic and socioeconomic development of East Greensboro in a way that has regard for and respect for East Greensboro residents. I interpret the goals and guidelines laid out in this plan as representing certain assurances that East Greensboro residents will explicitly benefit from future potential projects and investments that will have to be done with regard to the stated plan visions and objectives of growth, mobility, and connectivity, community building, housing, and identity. Too often, economic growth comes at the expense of surrounding neighborhoods and without regard for what is truly needed in those neighborhoods. The adoption of this plan will provide a certain peace of mind to East Greens, excuse me, East Greensboro residents like myself, who live in the adjacent neighborhoods, that the city will not allow for unregulated and unthoughtful growth at the expense of current residents or without regard for how that growth can benefit the quality of life for those residents like myself. Thank you for your time, and I hope you plan to support the resolution.
Thank you. And I believe we have Kimberly Cameron Vizum.
Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking in support of the resolution. I am the Executive Director of the North Carolina A&amp;T Real Estate Foundation, 200 North Bimble Road in Greensboro. A&amp;T representatives participated in presentations and community meetings throughout this process regarding the East Gate City Boulevard Corridor Improvement Plan. I just have one quick correction, Russ, on page 11. I need for you to insert the word "state" in North Carolina A&amp;T State University name on there. But we, in general, we look forward to the redesign of the East Gate City Boulevard, especially the O. Henry Boulevard Corridor, those on and off ramps, looking for a safer intersection there, looking forward to a redesign of traffic that better handles the pickup times at Dudley and Lincoln Schools. And most importantly, we look forward to the protection of NOAA, nationally occurring affordable housing, owned homes, increasing the affordable housing home ownership, and the protection from gentrification while redeveloping this corridor and bringing the needed resources to the community. We hope that the city expands or looks at providing free and/or reduced legal services to help black homeowners protect their heir properties. Instead of just giving free workshops, they need that extra step for those actual legal services. And the expansion of any owner occupied rehab programs to assist those elderly home, long-term homeowners, to making sure that their properties are retained. And with that, again, A&amp;T is in general support of this plan, and thank you all for listening.
Thank you. That is our final speaker. Do I have a motion?
I would like to move adoption of the East Gate City Corridor Plan.
So that was moved by Mrs. Hightower and seconded by Dr. Wells. Counsel, please vote. Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Dr. Wells, you have a question?
It's about the map?
It's about the map. When the councilwoman asked about how far it goes, I think it does a little zigzag because it goes all the way through Freeman Mill Road in one part. The map shows, shows that it goes, kind of does a little zigzag and goes up to Freeman Mill Road, that's what the map shows.
Yes, ma'am, that was the study area we had, you know, anytime we study a corridor, we have to have a boundary of areas that we send notifications to, do study for, and in this case, we talked with some specific neighborhoods about recommendations to help them, especially since there are some connections within those we wanted to emphasize.
I just didn't want us to think that it was stopping right at El Eugene Street, that's the clarification.
But it is, because he says the study area, that they studied, they, they reached out to, so Freeman Mill Road goes all the way past where they were talking about.
Right, that was a boundary that we used, as you say, for notifications and for working with.
Right, to get input information from people even outside of where this corridor piece is.
So keep in mind, these are not, this is not a regulatory plan, this is policies and in gen, the general guide for growth and investment, so there's no, there's no absolute and hard, but some of these, and then some of the boundaries actually are dealt, are more dictated by where we can get data and if it's whether we can split it or not. So to give us an idea of the impact of what we're having. So don't mean to, didn't mean to confuse, we'll, we'll clean that up in the, in the online document.
Okay. So that does pass eight to zero.
Right. So I had another quick question, since everybody spoke. What, what are our next steps? Because, you know, we're good at corridor studies, we're good at plans, area plans, we're good at that, but what are our next steps? Because that's why we're in a fix now with Random and Road. We did one in 2015 and kind of been dormant, that's why we're pushing. So we got, I'm glad we got this one done, but we need to know next steps.
So one, first steps we're going to do is to get the, you know, folks we worked with during the plan together to just sort of celebrate having this plan established and adopted, and then talk about how we can facilitate having some long-term conversations to make sure that there is, you know, common voice and a place to discuss activities that will happen on the corridor. I think that'll be a great step in, in really consolidating focus on the corridor and helping us move forward with those. A lot of the, a lot of the pieces in the plan's recommendations, for instance, for neighborhood and housing, housing and neighborhood development, are existing parts of their programming and portfolios. We'll make sure that those are publicized and known about in the plan. We'll continue to work with our redevelopment areas and keeping those moving forward, and I know they're, they're going to be working with specific neighborhoods and that are revitalization areas as well. From a transportation standpoint, there's a few projects that are going on now. The culvert replacement at the end of East Gate City Boulevard at the bridge is ongoing. I believe Willow Road will be seeing some improvement soon as that bridge project comes online, and hopefully we'll be looking at East Gate City for the complete streets treatment as well in the not-too-distant future. So a lot of little things we can start to work on once we get that initial meeting sort of kicked off.
Yeah, I know some sidewalks are planned within the body of that Gate City and the transportation piece, so we, just when are we going to designate investment in that? So we need to make sure we have money there to do those things. And so Gate City being one of the most thoroughfares that is very dangerous, because I live off of it, so I know I spend many minutes waiting to even exit my neighborhood, because they're coming off the highway doing 50, 60 sometime, probably 70 miles an hour, they don't slow down. Even the stoplights don't tend to slow them down too much, so we need to get people out of that corridor, it's very dangerous. So those sidewalks, I think, would be one of the first things I would like to see us also do as we look and try to start addressing the corridor as well, because if you can't walk the way you get to, I mean, there's some great amenities there, State of the Wild, Barbara Park, Gateway Garden, and even people working at the Gateway Research Park, so if they could be able to walk to those destinations, catch a bus, we've got several bus stops, that would be something I would like to see us really focus on trying to get implemented.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your work, Russ.
Okay, we will now move on to the general business portion of our agenda. Item I-1 is a resolution approving the operating agreement with the Greensboro Housing Development Partnership. Move the item. Moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Dr. Wells. Counsel, please vote. Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Counsel member Matheny?
And that passes eight to zero. Item I-2 is a resolution approving the execution, execution of leases of certain public spaces for outdoor dining patios. Moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Abuzawater.
Trey. Madam Mayor, I just want to make a clarification that when the original agenda came out, it was deemed that this was an agreement with Downtown Greensboro Incorporated. It is indeed not an agreement with Downtown Greensboro Incorporated, it is with the businesses in the city of Greensboro.
Yes, yes, you're correct.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
Counsel member Holston?
And that passes eight to zero, and our final item this evening is item I.3, An Ordnance Amending Fiscal Year 2023-24 General Fund Budget in the Amount of $500,000 for American Rescue Plan Enabled Services for the Greensboro Housing Coalition.
We need one recusal. Mr. Holston? You have to ask.
Ask that I be recused as a, in affiliation with the Greensboro Housing Coalition.
Move that. Move to recuse. So seconded by Mrs. Hightower, first, moved by Mrs. Hightower, seconded by Mrs. Thurm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, Mr. Holston has a different role now.
Yeah. I mean, we, I mean, I would just CYA, just in case.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
All right, so Mr. Mr. Holston is recused. Now, on item I-3, moved by Mrs. Thurm, seconded by Mrs. Hightower. Counsel, please vote. Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
And that passes seven to zero. All right, that is the end of our printed agenda. Boards and Commissions, Mrs. Hightower?
Needing to do some cleanup work.
Dr. Wells?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Dr. Latoya Gatheres to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero. Any, any other boards and commissions? Mr. Matheny? Mrs. Hoffman?
No, none, thank you.
Mrs. Thurm? Mrs. Abuzawater?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to place Catherine Faulkner on the Commission on the Status of Women to replace Jody Ruppel, who resigned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Thurm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero. Let's see, so, Mr. Holston?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Counsel comments, Mrs. Abuzawater?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There've been a lot of things going on the last couple of weeks. First, I think everybody is going to mention about National Night Out last evening, I had several people along with me, and it was a very pleasurable evening, and it was great to get out and see the neighborhoods all involved and wanting to talk to the officers and the fire department and staff, so it was just a great event all the way around. It always is, but every year it seems to be better and better. They had over 150 neighborhoods, so it was a very successful night. Wanted to mention about last Thursday, the Police Foundation sponsored the Grasshoppers Game, and that was really, really good. The, the first responders, police, and their families went to the game, and it was really good. I was working with the Crime Stuffers Group, and I think they handed out over 150 bags in like five seconds, it seemed like, so everybody was really involved and engaged, and let's see, what else? Oh, the trolley, I've heard people commenting about the trolley, and I've gotten a lot of messages and emails that they just love it, so just want to put that out there. I've gotten some major thank you, about, thank yous about that. I know that several of us went to the Chaos Game, the, the women's professional basketball team at Bennett College. I know Mrs. Thurm, and I think Mr. Holston came later, I don't know if I missed anybody else, but it, it was really, really a lot of fun. So when they're here the next time, I really encourage everyone to go out and watch them. If you'll remember, they came and spoke to city council, and they did last year as well, and Mrs. Thurm went last year, but it's really, really, these ladies play, these ladies really play the basketball game, so I encourage all of you to go out and support them. And of course, the International Civil Rights Center and Museum Gala, we, most of us went to, and it was a very enjoyable evening. Of course, Yvonne Johnson got a, an award, and also a friend of mine, well, Sandra Hughes got an award, and just so many people who were worthy of those awards. So it was a great evening, the place was packed, and everyone seemed to have a really good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, gosh, where do I start? I guess that trolley is an...
I guess that trolley is an exciting part of our community. I have heard from so many who have been down, and they're amazed that that trolley is at no charge and that it goes for as far as it goes. And it really is a nice addition. A lot of the younger folks have been talking about it. And so it's another part of the energy, part of the social district. It's just very nice to have that trolley. Had an opportunity to join the, the Reginald Center on Turnaround back on July 22nd. They had their Ninth Annual Walk Against Drugs and Violence, a 3.6 mile walk there, starting at the Peeler Center. And it was supported by our Office of Community Safety and their Peace on Purpose Campaign. So it was a really nice walk for a really good purpose, for a really good community. I was very happy and proud to be there. And was also happy to be at, at the Warner'sville Rec Center that very same day, as a matter of fact. The Rosa Foundation had a health fair, and they had a tremendous, tremendous crowd there, and lots and lots of vendors. It was so very helpful. I'll also say that our, our GPD and our, our fire department officers were there in support of it, and it was wonderful. As was mentioned, the Civil Rights Center Gala was a, was a grand affair, and always happy to be a part of that. I'll say on this past Saturday night, I was the, the guest speaker for the Liberian Organization of the Piedmont and the United Liberians of the Triad out at Temple Emmanuel. Chief Thompson and I were there. Also, we had Jody Stanley and Fanta Dorley representing human rights as we celebrated the 176th Independence Day for the country of Liberia. And it was, if you've been before, it was a very spirited event, and we had a really good time, Chief Thompson and I. I won't say what he did on the, on the dance floor, if he doesn't say what I did on the dance floor. National Night Out, I was very honored to, to ride with Assistant Chief MJ Harris, but even more excited to ride with Jakaya, who is a student intern from NCA&amp;T, who is working, who's interning with Chief Harris. And we were all over the place, just engaging. They were handing out the stickers and, and the candy and the bears, and just engaging with our community. It was a beautiful evening, and had, had an opportunity to attend a lot of the events, probably not as many as Councilwoman Wells did. I did nine, Councilwoman Wells. Oh, I knew it, I knew it. I did 11.
Oh, wow.
And then last but not least, I'll say that something that I'd leave, a lot of us have done here in council, is that during this past summer, we were reading at the Freedom School at Reedie Fork and, and at Rankin Elementary, and just had a great time. I know that Crystal Black at, at Rankin Elementary and Leandra at Reedie Fork were very welcoming. And the students were so inquisitive, were so inquisitive, and had the very best questions. And I really can't wait to get back next year, when the Freedom School comes back, and, and maybe the city of Greensboro can play a part in it and somehow expand, because it's a really, really advantageous program for the children and also their parents and our community. So Madam Mayor, that completes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thurm?
As others had a great night last night. I rode with Captain Holly Pate and had a great time riding around District 5. A special shout out, though, to Stones Throw Apartments. They had their first National Night Out last night and had a, just a huge crowd. It was great, lots of fun. I also had the opportunity recently to tour the landfill. I know others have as well. What an educational experience to go out there and see exactly how our landfill works and what's involved, and that was a real education. It really was. It was very impressive. So thanks for everybody for, for taking us out there and learned a lot. Other than that, been very busy. We've been to several of the same events, the civil rights event as well as others. It's full-fledged summertime, and just would like to encourage everybody to take care of yourself in the heat, especially our city employees that are out there working outside in the heat. And just take care, because it's, it's a tough time for those folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoffman?
Yeah, I, I too, on Friday last week, went out and spent a couple of hours at the White Street Landfill. What, what an amazing operation that is in terms of everything that goes on there. You know, just, you know, again, as throughout our city, just a wonderful group of, of seasoned employees there with, with great ideas about things that we can do. So I, I appreciated the opportunity to do that. I had not been out there in quite some time. So that's amazing. It's almost 1,000 acres. So with a, a lot of activity going on there. So I, again, appreciated the opportunity to do that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Matheny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, yeah, I got, when I paused on one of the items, I think it was I-1, one of the things that struck me is the amount of folks that I see that have increased throughout the city, not just downtown, experiencing what appears to be homelessness. And I think it would be great for us, if, if possible, to receive some type of update on the activity at the Regency, our partnership with the firm that, that was chosen, the timeline on the outfit of the property, and what's going on with the Oaks property. You know, I hear, and, and, you know, we've got a lot of folks walking around that talk to, you know, various folks that are experiencing or have needs. And I think it'd be great for council to be updated on what the city is doing and what strategies we've put into place and how are they working. The other thing is, and, and this may or may not be related to strictly being homeless, but in the last six months, today, or Monday, we lost the third person that was experiencing homelessness downtown. You know, I think some of our speakers are right. It's not only what we're doing, because I think we've put forth a lot of money to action, but what is the action that we're putting forth actually being done? We vote on a lot of things up here, but where's the follow-up? The other side is, where are we with our shelter capacity? Where, are we at 100% yet? Like, I know that through the winter, in particular, our shelter capacities were running still at 50%. And we've asked for them to be up to 100. Where are we? We contributed funds to at least one or two organizations that needed some roof repairs so they could get to 100%. Where are we? And I think we have got to request from this council more strategic follow-ups, in particular as it relates to the funds, which has been millions of dollars, to get folks the help that they need. And so if you could update on the Regency, the Oaks, current shelter capacity, and if we can only get through city-funded partners, that's fine. Let's just get some information so we know what's going on. We sat here, we heard about heat, we talked about heat, but what are we doing about it? What's the plan for the pallet homes? Because it's August. It's going to be September like that, which means it's going to be October, November. What's our plan? Surely, we're talking about it. Is it the same plan as the past? I think we need to be updated on that. And so I don't know if we need any votes, or if you take, you know, I certainly don't think you should take direction from one councilperson. Hopefully, we can get unanimous support for that, but I think it would be great for us to be updated on how our money is being invested and already getting our return on investment.
Mr. Matheny, I did send out a, an update on Regency and Oaks on Friday to council as part of my bi-weekly. However, if the update you're requesting is more of a staff coming to speak to the entire council during a council meeting or a work session, we'll work that out. But I did send a memo out on Friday.
What we hear on the street is folks got kicked out of the Regency, they went to the Oaks, they got kicked out, now they're on the street. They're not, so, no one is physically located in the Regency. That's correct? How many folks are located in the Oaks?
Well, we don't own that yet.
Right. So apparently, there's some management, but we're supposed to, like, how are we surrounding, how are we helping folks? Because if you, you don't have to go far throughout town to see an abundance of increase of folks experiencing need. So I guess it's, it's, and quite frankly, it's, we talk about, you know, Madam Mayor, I don't know where we are with the, with, you know, the...
Task force?
Task force. But I know we, we wanted to have it in a certain amount of affordable housing and some housing, but I guess also included in some of that, Mr. Manager, maybe it'd be great is to have one running document that has Regency and certainly other strategies, but other funds that we have implemented, whether it's the $500,000 that we corrected tonight that goes to the Housing Coalition. Apparently, you know, the, we worked out the instance that was up here with the HUD and our relationship with them. Is that, that includes the Regency management, correct? And the housing vouchers? Right.
Yeah, and that was also included in the memo. But I think it's August 10, August 24.
You said HUD, did you mean GHA?
GHA, yeah.
Yeah, GHA, yes. That was included in there. But I'm just trying to remember, August 10, August 24, 20, okay, September, yes. We do have COC coming to speak to council at a work session to present, and we may want to address some of this as part of that.
Well, and it needs to be something... If that's the pleasure of council. I think we're all, whether we want to admit it publicly or not, are frustrated. And it's not your fault. It's not city staff's fault. Let me just say that now. But it's, it, it really saddens me when we lose yet another person in six months that I know of just in downtown. That's just in downtown. So what's happening throughout? And again, the shelter capacity is an issue, the planning, the forward-thinking planning on the pallet shelters. So if you could just include that, it's like a running list, any, any funds that we have voted on that relate to affordable housing or houselessness could be included, shelter capacity as well, because that's a big one. They could be housed instead of being in heat. They could be housed instead of being cold in, in just a short amount of time. I know Ms. Thurm said, we're in the throes of summer. School's getting ready to start for my kids in two weeks, so I'm getting ready to be in the throes of fall, and it's going to be here before we know it. The other thing is, I happen to agree somewhat with one of the speakers, and relates to the South End Project, the proverbial Lidl Project, and the disappointment in that, I think the quote yesterday was being back at step one. If, I would be, I am curious to know what steps we're taking actually to clean up the site. How much money do we actually have, and what have we invested from the 2016 bonds, which as y'all folks know, seven years ago? You know, I had concerns about that closing from the gate day one. So what can we do? What plan can we do that can actually put something strategic on that site that'll not only help the surrounding neighborhoods, but the whole city? Because Gate City is a Mecca Natalie Pass Miller mentioned. It takes a lot of work to get into downtown and to leave downtown. Gate City is a key corridor in our whole city. Gate City and Windover are two keys. So that site is huge, and it's very important. And that, that should be included, and rightfully so, in the Gate City plan, which it is. So what, you know, let's, what strategies do, do we have in, in cleaning that site up and moving forward, and how much money do we have available, and how can we leverage that? And so those, those are, I rarely speak, so I made up for it tonight.
That's okay.
But those are very important on my, on my list. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wells?
Well, as, as everyone has said, we've been to lots of places, and we've done a lot of things since the last meeting. It was a pleasure to have the captain of Police District 4, Captain Goody Coontz, to be the driver yesterday, and my god, goddaughter was riding with me. We did cover 10. Last year, I did 20.
Oh, boy.
So it was, it was quite relaxing this time. I got a chance to really stop and talk to people, and I applaud all of the leaders who organized their, their, their communities, and that they were having fun. They had a lot of food and a lot of fellowship. So I enjoyed it. I have a real shout out for, for Woodmere Park. They had the biggest. The people were there, they brought their chairs, and they were sitting in the park, had a wonderful time, and, and good food. The, the concerned citizens will have their meeting on Thursday night on Zoom at 7:00. And I enjoy going to Rankin School, or the Freedom School to read, and tomorrow morning, I'll be at Reedie Fork reading to some children. I think we have a lot of things going on, and I know Mr. Matheny is concerned, and all of us are concerned about our citizens, especially those that don't have a place to call, you know, actually their houses. But we're concerned about them, and we want everybody to do the best you can. If you see somebody that you can help, help them. If you can give them some water or give them a little shelter, do that. They're in some situations that I don't think they particularly like. Some of them are so used to being in the streets and homeless that they don't want a shelter as such. But these are our, they are brothers and our sisters, and we are brothers and sisters, we are brothers keepers. So let's do what we can for each other. Greensboro is a wonderful place to live. People here are thriving, and then we have some that are just trying to survive. So let's help each other.
Thank you. Mrs. Hightower?
So thank you very much. I'm going to start out with the first concern I have, which kind of speaks to the Lidl site. One of the speakers mentioned $4 million left in the 2016 bond. I would like to know exactly what that bond says that money can be spent for. If it can be spent for remediation, then that is the way we probably need to look at going and talking to NCDQ and some others. This weekend, I was at a conference, and one of the speakers came and talked about our communities and what we face. And so what they talked about was, we call, we say food desert. Desert is a natural occurrence, but it's apartheid, food apartheid. That's an intentional to-do away and not have food access. That site sits in an area of a food apartheid, and we need to make sure that we get a food source there, grocery store. If we can keep the one we have interested in that site, we need to do all we can. We don't always need to throw up our hands and move on to the, the plan you want to do to start with, because there's a plan out there that folk want to do. And in spite of... that folk want to do. And in spite of what they know is needed, it's a self-interest agenda being perpetuated. So we need to ensure that we make sure we serve the individuals and the people that live in that area and all around. We can't have a Gate City, East Gate City corridor plan without one of the things they say in that corridor plan, and that's to have more non-residential uses. It's what it says. If you're going to have a plan, you gotta have information in it, it needs to be implemented. So I'm not giving up on the Lidl site. I'm saying, we want you to come to this area, and if we got $4 million sitting somewhere, and we can utilize it for that site, that's what we ought to be trying to do. We can find excuses for everything. Let's find excuses to do something right for a change. This community deserves it. Okay? I love living here, too. But we along, everything that comes through our side of town is long. Everything. We have to wait, and as, as old people used to say, wait broke the wagon down. We tired of waiting because we already broke down. So I just would like for us to revisit what's in that bond, if there's money, to see how we can utilize that to remediate whatever is there. Because regardless of who goes there, it's got to be remediated. But let's do it to show good faith towards someone we want to have in this community.
So I would say also, Councilman Hightower, thank you, the, I hate to repeat this again, but the update that I sent on Friday also had a breakdown of this funding. You see a memo there that's specific, that specifically addressed South Elm redevelopment area. Yes, there is, there was $4.5 million in 2016 bond, and I think that's probably where Jason got that information from, of which approximately $4.1 million remains. But it's not just for that site, it's for the entire brownfields in the southeast, in the SCRA area. Now, we have to understand that this is not just a South Elm issue. This is a serious issue for downtown, period, that we've got a lot of sites that are brownfields. The city, of course, over the years, has spent a ton of money on this particular Lidl site. What I would just say is if you will give me some more time, because I feel that I, we need to do our own due diligence by really confirming with DEQ exactly what the issue is before we go forward. I really believe that that's, that's the place to start, and we're working on that through our city attorney's office, but also through our lobby, is to find out exactly what is going on before we commit to doing anything on that side. Because the city has spent tons of money on that particular site in the past to clean it up, and I, I hesitate to think that even if regulations were to change and staff is to change, it will require 18 to 36 months to get some form of agreement. So I want to be able to make sure that we, we clean that up first of all in our conversation, then we'll come back to you. So that may be another update that I will share with you, probably verbally in the next few days, but I, we've made outreach to DEQ, and once we hear back, we will let you know where we're going. But I will also let you know that as late, as at this afternoon, Lidl has confirmed to me that they are still very much interested in that site. They would like to still provide, you know, grocery store on that site, but we need to work with them and find out exactly what DEQ is saying. But you are right, we do have a $4.1 million that remains from that 2016 bond, but it wasn't just for this site. It's really for the southeast, South Elm remediation area, redevelopment area, and has multiple sites.
And thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that. But, you know, this, this is the thing. Sometimes we need to be intentional, and it is long overdue that we have really invested in spaces that are disenfranchised spaces. It is time that we now put our attention in those areas that have been neglected and overlooked and underserved. It is time. We can put money everywhere else, and then we can excuse what happens over here. The redevelopment areas that we have in this city, that I sit on the GHDP board, they take forever to be developed, forever. They're sitting there now, many of them, 20, 30 years of redevelopment. When are we going to develop? Why are we saying re because we haven't even developed? You redevelop something that's already developed. We ain't even developed. We need to correct these wrongs that have been years in the making. There's money there. These areas, these lands are tied to government money. We need to be utilizing a way to get these properties back in clean condition. That site, Bingham Park, East Side Park, got contamination over there on land over on East Side, on Gillespie Street, contamination. This is a problem, and we got to be intentional about correcting. And I won't, I'll get off my soapbox there because I know everybody's ready to go home, but this is something we need to address, and it's got to be addressed sooner than later. So I would ask...
Do you want to record that Sharon Hightower agreed with me?
No. Oh, Lord, geez. What happened? Is it, is it cold down below now? We can go skating down? No, I'm just kidding. Also, I visited several spaces and places this past week when I'll be in the landfill, over at the landfill. And let me just tell you something. If ever there was a dirty, nasty job, that is it. Talk about having to really respect people. Those people are in the heat, in the sun, in the dirt, making sure that these leaves that everybody want are pulled out of a plastic bag and put in a pile. And they don't even make $15 an hour. You tell me, how is it we're respecting people by not even paying them adequately and then putting them through this? It is nasty, filthy. But they're out there with a smile on their face, getting the job done. We better, we, we, I'm sorry. But I do not support loose leaf collection. Anybody who still do, something got to be wrong, because I would not put any human being through that at all. And I do not support it, haven't supported it anyway for a long time, but now, definitely.
I've been right there with you, Sharon. You know that.
Yeah, I know. So that's, we, we got, we got to step up. We even got to look and see, how do we even get our temp workers to $15 an hour? Because there's, these are temporary workers, and they don't even make $15 an hour. We should not even be allowing that, if that's our minimum wage. We shouldn't be allowing that. I went to Civil Rights Banquet, great, wonderful, you, y'all. Everybody said all that other stuff. National Night Out, that was fun. Went with Chief Austin, Rick Austin, Assistant Chief Austin. One of the things we did, we went to places we'd never been before. And by doing that, we educated a whole lot of communities about establishing their own neighborhood watch. A lot of them didn't know. They said, well, how do we do that? How do we find out about the resources going on in the city? They didn't know. So it's great to go to the same old places over and over and over, but you need to go to places you've never been before. And that's what we did. And, and actually, I'm sure some staff not happy, but I got some tow motor forklifts or whatever. They were off the street. They shouldn't have been there. So thanks, staff, for handling that for me. I want to say congratulations to First T of the Triad. They were given a grant of $200,000 from Wyndham. You know, Wyndham's here, PGA is here this week. They also generally hold a youth clinic at the Grandover, but this year, thanks to the young man who replaced Mike Barber, he brought to their attention Gillespie Park Golf Course. So they held the youth clinic at Gillespie Golf Course. He said because it's more connected to the community. And I saw more black and brown faces than ever before. Opportunity and inclusion at one of his finest hours. So I want to thank him for doing that and being cognizant. And the people at Wyndham even said, a couple of them said to me, we didn't know about this place. This is a gem, and they didn't know. So I appreciate them investing in our youth and look forward to a long relationship with them continuing. On August 23, there was a marker that we will unveil and recognize at Gillespie Golf Course.
Okay.
Recognizing the Greensboro Six who integrated Gillespie Golf Course in the 60s. Dr. George Simpkins led that group, and they will do it on his 100th birthday, which is August 23. Nasha, do we know the time yet exactly?
I can get that back to you. I don't have the exact time with me.
Okay, if you could let everyone know if people are interested in attending.
Did you say you don't know what time? Oh, I think it's at 6:00.
Now, I don't know if we were going to do it that late, were we?
Yeah, I have it on my calendar for 6:00.
I thought we talked, I thought we talked about 2:00, but I thought, okay, we just need to kind of work that out. So I hope people can attend for that, but that's certainly a way to honor the Greensboro Six along with, and there's been some things said that the reason the sit-ins, the sit-ins happened is because of the Greensboro Six, that the four set in the lunch counter because of Dr. Simpkins and the other doctors who simply just wanted to play golf but got arrested trying to play golf. And the city of Greensboro had them arrested, but they corrected the wrong. And so I'm glad that that occurred. So that's my Black History moment. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. First and foremost, I would like to extend my sympathies to the family of Larry Goldston, Greensboro firefighter, who recently passed away. His funeral will be tomorrow. He leaves behind a wife and a young daughter. Our firefighters have had a really tough 18 months, and this is just another real sadness that they have faced. And so my sympathy goes out to the family and to the Greensboro Fire Department on the loss of, of their brother. I want to say that I did do the National Night Out last night with Josie and the police chief. We made it to six places. My daughter Catherine came with us. We had a good time, great conversation. Today, Dr. Goldie Wells, Mary Kay and I met with Congresswoman Manning in our Office of Community Safety. Trey was there, the police chief, Letitia, to talk about gun violence in a community, and it was a really good roundtable discussion. And she said that she's been speaking with other congresspeople who have been having similar discussions, and that their discussions always go to guns, how do we get guns off the street? And our conversation was all about the root causes and what can we do to really change the culture. And it was a, it was a really good conversation, and she said it was much different than conversations that have been heard throughout the country. I think she felt that there was much more depth to what we were trying to put forward, and that was something that I think made us all proud, that that was a really good discussion. I also had on my list, I wanted to talk about the pallet houses. I assume that they're going to go up where they were last year. I wanted to know if we could maybe get 10 more, which would house another 20 people. It seemed like there was enough room out at the site to certainly put more homes. You know, some of our speakers said that they are seeing new faces, and I have to say that I've seen a lot of new faces, too. I've also seen a lot of people with, with luggage, that they are, they have rolling luggage and rollerboards, and, you know, I wonder if they are new to our community, if they are coming here because we have services, and maybe they come from rural areas that don't have services. We don't ask people for their papers to prove where they're from, but we're seeing a lot of new faces, and we have to find a way to accommodate, you know, our Greensboro residents, but also these new people that are coming in. We're hopeful that the Regency and other areas will be up to capacity. When, when we gave money to Urban Ministry, Zach, they said that they would be at 100% this year. That was kind of, I think, one of the provisions of us giving them that money. There are a few other shelters that need to bring up their, their full capacity. I think it would be good to have an accounting of where we've spent our money. And of the permits that are pending for residential, is there a way to identify which of those permits are for low-income housing? And is there a way that we can make sure that we are giving those builders the attention they need to get those units built so we can get people in the 30% to 60% AMI range into housing as quickly as possible? I was surprised when I drove down East, West Gate City Boulevard yesterday, in front of Denny's, which is across the street from Krispy Kreme, at the corner of, I believe it's Holden. There was a camp that was set up. It was right at a bus stop, but there was, there was really an encampment that had sprung up. Lots of belongings there. It, it was right on the property of a, of a restaurant, an open business. And, you know, I think we all drive around and we see things and see different parts. And, Mr. City Manager, I wanted to know if there is a way that we could encourage our employees who are out on the road every day, that when they see something that is out of the ordinary, whether it's a mattress laying somewhere in a median, we always get calls about things in a median. I've seen a bunch of traffic signs that must have been involved in accidents that are laying in medians. Gary does a great job of getting them picked up for me. But when, when there are things that are out in our city that just shouldn't be there, or if we see people in distress, is there a way that we can empower our employees to be more aware of their surroundings and have a number that they can call and just say, hey, I want you to know that this sign is down, or, hey, we've got this family living on the street corner, or can we get this mattress picked up? But we have thousands of employees who are out on the street every single day, and if there is a way that we could just encourage them to call in a number that then we can send another employee out to...
GSO?
Well, you know, that might be too cumbersome if they're, if they're driving, and they've got to pull up their phone and get the GSO. But if there's a number that they could call and just say, you know, and, and not to get caught in the 373 city number, if we had a special number that they could just say, hey, at the corner of this and this, there is this. That's all they have to do, and we can try to get it picked up. But I would really like us to encourage our employees just to be more aware of as they're driving around the city, and if they see people in distress, we can make sure that B-Hart gets out to see them. Because I feel like we are missing communication, and that they could really be that missing link that helps us identify people who are in trouble in areas that need to be cleaned up. So that's kind of just my pie-in-the-sky idea today. And if it's a possibility, I'd love to see us enact it and to try to encourage our employees to really help us raise the standard of living for people in the city.
It's not a bad idea, Mayor. I think it's innovative. I'll let the deputy city manager respond further to that.
You know, Mayor, a few years back, I talked to, I think it was Dale, you, was it you, about a 3-1-1... About a 311 number. A 311 that we could call in for just something like that. Kinda just drifted down. But that's, I think, me and Chris and somebody else. I think when Dale was here out at the, he was over there trash. Cause that's a quick, quickie, 311.
It, it was me. I'm sorry, my mic's not working. Chuck, you're gonna do it, do it. I don't know what happened. It's a sign. They want me to go. Actually, the timing's really good on this. So yes, you and I did have some conversation around it. And, and it is something that we encourage. Um, but what we talked about more recently, as a matter of fact, we talked about just this past week was incentivizing it. So we do a lot of cross-training. If you see, uh, something like what you described, signs, what have you, please report it. You're right, Gary's a great resource. Uh, the, actually, GSO Collects app is a really great resource and many of us use that too. But we talked about maybe incentivizing that in some way. Uh, so we're, we're working with some ideas around not necessarily making it overly competitive, but incentivizing the notion that you would do that every time you go out. And if you have the opportunity to help another department or our residents, you say something about it. So we're gonna make it extremely easy. I think your timing on this is perfect. Appreciate the idea.
And Madam Mayor, I think that using the GSO Collects, although it does have its issues if you're driving, if you stop, it's, it's because of the, of the tracking and trending. I know that, that I use it often. And you can always go back and look at it. The comments are there. You can pull data, you can pull reports off of it. And that's gonna help our follow-up. So it's important to, 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 to get it in, but it's also important to be able to follow up and to check. So I like the GSO Collects.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the GSO Collects. I've used it. But I know if somebody's driving down the street and they see something and they know that there's a mattress, it, it's just easier to call and say, can you get this mattress picked up? And, um, instead of trying to remember what intersection it was at. And so however it gets reported, I think is great. But, um, I, I, I think we can use it for a number of different things besides just sanitation and aesthetics. But helping people when you see that there are people camped out and getting them the, uh, the resources that they need. Let's, so we did, um, we, we had a homicide that was reported today, um, in downtown. And we believe that it was one of our homeless population. And that would have been, I believe, the second, um, homeless individual downtown who was a victim of a homicide this year. You know, we, we certainly grieve over every homicide. But these are, are truly people who are voiceless. And, you know, I don't know what the circumstances are. And I guess that will unravel. This is a person who I believe came and spoke in front of city council. And so, um, so it is, you know, it... You know, when we look at the homicide numbers these years, this year, they are really, really disturbing. The last press conference that the, the chief and council members were at talked about the demographics and not only the demographics about where throughout the city, but, um, domestic violence and acquaintance violence. And by and large, people who are killing each other know each other. And that is, um, you know, that's very concerning. What is it that we can do to help ease those tensions? And that is not something that we're gonna police our way out of. That is gonna take a community, um, effort. And I'm hopeful that the Office of Community Safety will really be able to play a strong role in that. We know it's a, it's a new office and we've gotta give them time to get their legs, legs up and running. But it's something that, uh, this has been a really, really tough year. And then I'll, I'll end. Oh, one other thing. We talked a lot about speed humps and speed bumps lately. And I just noticed that there is one on, um, what is the, the street that's in between Summit? It is, um, right over by the Cultural Arts Center. There's a really big speed hump. And if we can have it there, I think we can have it in other places too. You know, that's been there for a while. It is, uh, it is a very large, um, but, you know, I think that means that we can certainly look and adapt this for residential neighborhoods. And then finally, um, the Wyndham is in town. And, uh, that is something that's very exciting. It is shown in over 100 countries. It is really good press for Greensboro, North Carolina, um, to be able to hear our, our city, really go worldwide. And the course looks absolutely beautiful. We have a strong field. Uh, the first round is on Thursday. Uh, it goes through Sunday. Tickets are still available. But if you, if you don't wanna go out and watch the court, walk the course, you can certainly watch it on TV. So, um, that'll be another great event that we have here in the city of Greensboro. And that's all I have tonight. Um, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Um, I did wanna make one comment regarding, uh, a comment that was made, uh, earlier today about the, the order that came down today.
The Lopez?
Yes. Um, I guess I would briefly just say that non-lawyers reading legal documents is kinda challenging. Non-lawyers reading and trying to interpret legal documents is kinda challenging. That order, the, the decision with, with respect to a motion that was made by, uh, the, uh, police, the former policeman's attorney, not the city. All we did was to just point out that if that motion was granted, then the case would be moot. And the judge chose to treat that as a motion and tell us we needed to file it another way. It's neither here nor there. Uh, but these things are too serious to sorta make belittle. And I have every confidence in our outside, uh, council on these matters. And we've been pretty successful recently.
Thank you.
So Chuck, can you talk then about what was also said about the change? Has the law changed at all around requesting body one camera? Do, you know, they brought that up?
The law's not changed since, uh, I guess a year and a half ago at the end of the session when they added this thing about critical incidents. I think it's pretty obvious as to what the law is about it, uh, any lawyer can read that statute. It's not a mystery at all.
Yeah, but we also have, as you say, non-lawyers reading it too, so I just...
True, but the suggestion was made that lawyers don't understand it. And I think do, lawyers do understand it. It's, it actually has turned that process not, uh, away from being a special process into being regular litigation. So if you wanna see it, you have to file an or, a motion, I mean, a, a complaint. And there's 30 days before the, uh, whoever's the custodian of the record has to respond. And, and it, it functions like regular litigation. So that's the process.
So do we need to do anything, um, in writing or instructing you as a policy that says if there is an officer-involved shooting, automatically we wanna see the body one camera footage?
Well, I think that's what the...
I know the chief has kinda done something, but I don't know.
You did bring that up to me and I sort of, uh, deferred to the chief as I was aware that he was under the process of, about to release a policy on it. So now he has a policy about it. Um, and I was planning to follow that. Now, if that's something that you want me to do different, let me know. I, I think the policy, I would prefer not to do it at this moment, but I can follow up with you all for fear of being incorrect.
I've spoken with, as I talked about a little bit earlier, I've spoken with the chief and we'll provide you, uh, with the detail with a copy of the policy. I'll send you a message with the details. But essentially, kinda back to what Councilwoman Hightower just spoke of, if there is a, an officer-involved shooting, that's a critical incident. But I, I'll get the chief and one of the intentions of the policy was to identify a critical incident. There could be other things, like a, a police officer might be involved in a vehicle crash that, uh, caused a serious injury or something like that. Or, uh, uh, through the history of things. I mean, you know, every day brings something new. Something might happen that could, uh, grab the public interest that needs to be released. So that could very well be, uh, identified as a critical incident. So, uh, to your point, I think we're asking, we're getting to the same place. And what the chief was trying to do was essentially respond to, uh, what the council's been asking for each time we have one of these incidents. I think what he's directed his, his staff to do is identify an internal policy that immediately, um, it's a rule they asked for that. Similar to, uh, if an incident takes place, then an officer is automatically placed up, placed in a certain status. Work-wise, uh, it's investigated a certain way and so on and so forth. But I'll, I'll get you all that information though. But it's accomplishing what you're, what you're asking.
All in favor, say aye. Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night.